I will call to order the June 10th meeting of the Common Council. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call, please. Ms. Lynch?
Alderperson Diaz?
Here.
Alderperson Doyle?
Here.
Alderperson Manley?
Here.
Alderperson Ricky?
Here.
Alderperson Steiner?
Here.
And Alderperson Years?
Here.
And Alderperson McEvoy will be absent and excused this evening.
We do have a quorum, so we will proceed. Next we have public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening, if they would please come forward at this time for the benefit of us and for those watching at home, if you would, please state your name and address, please. And if you would, just make sure that the green button there is lit up.
It looks lit.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Patrick Lidle. I live at 608 Hamlet Circle. Common Council, Mayor, and staff. When we spoke last week during my interview for the open council seat, I mentioned my interest in taking some of my work experience and sharing it with you regardless of whoever you all selected for the open position. Share with you some of the best practices for greater stakeholder engagement and citizen involvement, as well as some examples I've seen around the country through my work of good and maybe not-so-good municipal government. In order to put my time where my mouth is, I wanted to take just a moment tonight to share one example with you all. One of our clients is a mid-sized city in the southeastern U.S. Although the city is larger than us, it has a number of things in common. They were recently able to land a large employer that created a lot of opportunities that weren't there previously, as well as some challenges. In addition, their longtime mayor was removed from office through a Tea Party-led campaign that also saw seven of nine council members turn over in this spring's election. One of the first acts for the new mayor was to request the resignation of all 24 of his department heads and senior staff. Now, this is a strong mayor form of government, and that was completely in his right to do so. The dust had a little bit of time to settle, and by earlier this month, the mayor had replaced 18 out of 24 department heads and those senior staff, many of them longtime public employees. Now, I'm not in a position to judge whether that was the right decision or wrong decision, but seeing the effect it's had on the city government, it's ground to nearly paralysis during that time. The new leaders that the mayor has appointed have come almost exclusively from outside with little to no municipal experience. Many of them, not surprisingly, were part of the mayor's campaign and in his previous office when he was in state government. It's definitely too soon to tell if this change will create more challenges for the city, or if it gives them an opportunity to bring new voices and new perspectives to government. My concern, and the concern that we've seen raised again and again when political -- when city governments get more highly politicized, is that a couple of things almost always happen. Number one, city staff and members of the community advisory boards are more likely to have to choose sides or align themselves with a particular political agenda. It's most obvious in the department heads because they're the ones subject to replacement, but we see it trickle down within the departments and within the other committees. As a result, you see significant shifts in city policy with every election cycle. Almost always -- number two, almost always what goes with this polarization is less interest in compromise and wider citizen engagement. The focus of the leadership shifts to the next election and getting their supporters active instead of getting input from a wider and broader range of communities, citizens in the community. To conclude, I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you all last week, as well as listening to me again tonight. I also want to encourage all of you to keep your focus on broader community engagement and priority setting, not necessarily on getting the votes you need for the next issue or the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lidle. Excuse me. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name is Mike Bear. I live at 543 Harvest Lane here in Verona. Happy to be a relatively new resident of Verona and appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. One of the first things I did when I moved to Verona was send nomination form to Mayor Huckmer, expressing my interest in serving the city and being involved in the city. And I appreciate the opportunity to interview with a few of you last week, and I thought we had a great conversation, and, you know, I really look forward to continuing that opportunity -- continuing that conversation and the ability to be involved with the council. I'd like to tell you a little bit about my work. I'm a full-time researcher and advocate on issues that affect poor people. I work for a nonprofit based in Milwaukee, but we work on issues that affect people statewide. And I also have expertise working in and around governments at all levels, and would certainly appreciate the opportunity to bring what expertise I have to your work and to help make Verona a better place to live. Had the opportunity to meet with many of you over the last couple weeks, except, I think, from Mr. Manley, but certainly look forward to talking with you further, and, you know, certainly hope that we can all come together as a city, work together, and I'd ask that you support me to fill the open seat in the 4th District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak this evening? Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak? This will be the third and final time anyone from the public that wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion, and we'll continue with the agenda. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the May 22 meeting of the Common Council. The minutes were included with your packet. What is your pleasure? We have a motion by Mr. Manley to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, just a couple of things very quickly. Certainly, on behalf of everyone involved in city government, we want to congratulate the not only Verona High School grads, but all the high school grads. Congratulations on the job. Well done, and we wish them the best in their endeavors as they seek employment. Secondly, we certainly want to thank Brad Zog and anyone who was involved in Hometown Days. Again, another very successful event. I had an opportunity to talk to Brad several times throughout the weekend. The weather, of course, we can't control the weather, but it behaved relatively well. I was coming back from the eastern side of the state late Thursday evening, and I was really worried, as hard as it was raining, that it might be raining here, but I think we survived pretty well. So, again, I think another very successful year, and we appreciate working with Brad and everyone else that's involved with Hometown Days. Next, I have an appointment this evening to the Verona Library Board. We had set -- excuse me, nine people that had expressed interest to serve on the library board, more than what I've seen for any appointment for anything since I've been on the council. I am recommending, based on discussions, conversations that I had with Library Director Brian Simons, Kevin Neese. Kevin is a resident of the city of Verona for about six years. He is an attorney. He has worked in the public sector. He's also worked in the corporate side of things. He has a seven-year-old daughter and a 10-year-old daughter, and he said they just about live at the library. And he's looking very eagerly to serve on the library board. So, I would ask for your confirmation of Kevin Neese to be appointed to the library board. Do -- So moved. We have a motion by Mr. Steiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. All those in favor of confirmation of Kevin Neese to the library board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we will get notice out to Kevin immediately, well, tomorrow. That concludes my business, and we will move to the administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. I have a few updates this evening. First of all, the state budget has been passed out of the Joint Finance Committee. Dane County Cities and Villages is putting together some summary update information, and I'll make sure to share that with the full council. The budget is then going to go to the legislature for the Assembly and Senate's consideration with the goal of having that completed by June 30th, the end of the state fiscal year. A couple of meetings that we have coming up. Tomorrow evening is going to be a meeting of the ad hoc committee looking at the Public Safety Task Force for the fire EMS facility. That committee members are going to be meeting at 2:00 here at City Hall to do tours of a facility in Madison and the Middleton Fire EMS. And then the formal committee meeting will start here at City Hall at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow evening. In addition to reviewing tours, they will also be discussing a potential draft request for proposal for recommendation, as well as a preliminary space needs analysis for a new fire EMS facility. Next Monday, June 17th, at 6:00 p.m., there will be a Committee of the Whole meeting that will take place here at City Hall. The focus of this Committee of Whole meeting is going to be on the city's financial management policy and fiscal issues, and we're going to be welcoming back Mike Harrigan from Ellers and Associates to assist us with that discussion next Monday evening. And also coming up on June 18th, the Police and Fire Commission will be meeting again. They have been holding a series of meetings discussing the process for the hiring of a fire chief for a city fire department. They will be continuing that discussion and potentially taking action in open session on that item on June 18th. That meeting time is to be determined, tentatively either 6:00 or 6:30 p.m. And then they will be scheduling additional meetings to continue looking at the department and the process for hiring other staff for the city department coming up in the future months. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Years?
Yes, one quick question. I know the last time that this was brought up before the council, we had talked about looking at comparables for the fire chief salary. Has that information been found or looked at?
Mr. Burns?
Yes, there is additional comparable information that Chief Giver, Chief of the Fire District, has put together, and we shared that with the Chair of the Police and Fire Commission. I believe that's one of the things that they would be looking at at their meeting on the 18th.
Any further questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none. Thank you, Bill. And we will move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Quite a few items this evening. First item is the 2013 Street Rehabilitation Project. The concrete replacements have all been completed on Mark Drive, Thompson Street, and Melody Circle. Contractor has reshaped the base course and has scheduled asphalt paving on these streets next Monday. Contractor is currently working in the Eastview Heights area, our neighborhood. He has approximately half of the concrete removals and replacements completed. It'll take approximately two to three weeks to complete the rest of the concrete removals, and then another two to three weeks to complete street grading and paving. So, those projects, that project is on schedule for completion probably by the end of July or early August. Cathedral Point Phase III, contractor has completed approximately 50% of the sanitary sewer construction in that phase. Sanitary sewer construction should be completed next week. He'll then move on to water main construction. All work is scheduled on Cathedral Point Phase III by the end of July. Well House, number five, the Well House and Reservoir. Construction continues. It's going very well. The Well House is completely enclosed. The reservoir only has the roof left to be poured before it's enclosed. The mechanical and electrical subcontractors will begin work inside the Well House this week. All work is scheduled for completion by August 31st. U.S. Highway 18151, West Verona Avenue off-ramp expansion. AE Comp continues to work on the plans and specifications. The environmental report has been completed and forwarded to the DOT for review. Preliminary plans and traffic management plan have been completed and also forwarded to the DOT. Design work is to be completed by June 30th, so that construction can commence by July 15th with completion of the construction by September 6th. Scenic Ridge Phase V, plans and specifications are currently under review by myself for the construction of utilities and streets to serve an additional 31 lots in Scenic Ridge. That construction would happen later this fall. Meister Addition Phase VII, plans and specifications have been received for the utility and street work to add the last five lots to the Meister Addition and to extend Meister Drive to North Nine-Mount Road. That construction will commence just as soon as I can get the plans approved and issue them a erosion control permit. And finally, the Lincoln Street Channel. You may have seen the sign this evening on Lincoln Street. Contractor has indicated that work will start June 24th and be completed. The sign says August 20th, but his completion date in the contract documents is September 13th, so it may go a little bit longer than August 20th. But at the pre-con this last week, he indicated he was going to try to be done by August 20th. Again, that's weather-related. A lot of water does come down through this drainage way during heavy rains, and if he gets, if we get a lot of heavy rain between now and the 1st of September, he may be delayed some. So, that completes my report this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Seeing none. Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
We will move on then to committee reports. We'll begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Years, please.
Thank you. Now, since this is my first time ever giving the background, please correct me if I do anything wrong, those of you who are also at the meeting. But the city and town of Verona jointly own the property at 101 Lincoln Street and 451 East Verona Avenue, which is the location of the Verona Fire Department, and Eagles Nest Ice Arena. As the Fire District is being disillusioned and City Fire Department is being created, the city, the town of Verona has agreed to deed the property at 101 Lincoln Street to the city of Verona for use for the construction of the new city fire station. A certified survey map is needed to divide the property into two lots, and the city and town would retain joint ownership of the eastern lot where the ice arena is located. And then the Plan Commission, there'd be lots 101 and 103, would correct?
Yeah, the addresses, the correct addresses of the property are 101 Lincoln Street for the fire station and 451 East Verona Avenue for the Eagles Nest Ice Arena. The county mapping system had the Eagles Nest listed as 103 Verona Avenue, so that's the reason for the discrepancy, but the correct addresses are the 101 and the 451.
Okay. Thank you. And the Plan Commission has reviewed the proposal and has recommend recommended approval.
And Mr. Years, are you willing to make that motion?
Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Years to approve Resolution R-13-018 approving a certified survey map to create two lots located at 101 Lincoln Street and 451 East Verona Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. We are open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Everyone understands what we're doing and the reason we're doing this? Okay. I will call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Mr. Years, is there anything else from the Plan Commission?
Yes, I just kind of wanted to mention the downtown traffic study and that there was a large portion of the public here for the meeting who have lots of good ideas and opinions on the issue. And I urge each alder, myself included, to make sure that we contact our constituents and make sure that they feel heard on this issue and cared for on this issue, since this is a big, a big step in Verona's downtown development.
Thank you, Mr. Years. We will move on then to the Finance Committee. Mr. Manley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $910,857.92.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Manley, please.
Thank you. The two largest expenses in the bills are, number one, a payment in the amount of $555,057 to J.H. Findorf &amp; Son, Inc. That's actually a replacement check for a check that was previously misplaced. And $107,477.58 to Hammersley Stone, which is our next payment in the mill and overlay program.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee or for city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the bills in the amount totaling $910,857.92. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mayor. Under Item 9A, I'm sorry, 9B2, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-13-19 authorizing the issuance and sale of 500, I'm sorry, $5,795,000 in general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013A.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Manley, did you want to make note of the amount on the agenda, if you would?
Sure. When we discussed this last time as a body, and as we discussed it in the Finance Committee, that the original amount was an approximate $5,945,000. After the bonds went out to the market, what we ended up with was an amount of $5,795,000. So, there's a little bit of a difference. This is a little bit less than we were anticipating.
Okay. Mr. Manley, did you desire, I think you're going to have Mr. Harrigan say a few words, that you want him to speak on this issue and the next agenda item?
As well as Item 9B3, which is the promissory notes as well.
Okay. Mr. Harrigan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mayor. I distributed this evening for each of the council members a packet that has the results of the bids that we received on your behalf today. And so, inside that document, or in that folder, there is the sale results document that's located on the left side, and I'm going to refer to that briefly. But we had two issues. The first one is the first resolution that was just moved. This was for the issuance of these refunding bonds. The original amount of $5,945 was able to be reduced because the winning bidder bid with a premium on the bid. The winning bidder is indicated on page one of the sale results report. It's a syndicate led by Robert W. Baird, and the key number is the true interest rate figure of 2.4022% on this particular issue. You received two bids on this issue, one from Baird with the 19 participating members of the syndicate, and one from Bosc out of Milwaukee. Their bid was 2.47%, so fairly tight bidding. If you refer to page five, we have identified the details of the resizing of this issue. On the left column, we have the geo-bonds for 9 million, or excuse me, $5,495, which was reduced to the $5,795, and that's primarily, we were able to apply that re-offering premium of $150,000 to reduce the size of the issue. This was an issue that was done for two purposes. You had two outstanding borrowings that had interest rates that were higher than what the marketplace has today. So, we were in a position to go to the market to see if we could get savings from refund, for refunding the 2007 bonds. If you look at page six, you will see the results of the comparison from the old interest cost to the new interest cost. We are projecting a net savings in present value of $205,891. That's the number in yellow on the far-right side. It amounts to about $20,000 per year after all costs. I will indicate that our original estimates estimated a higher savings, and the reason that the difference occurred is that the market has moved in the last month. If you take a look at the last page of the report, you can see how much movement there was. There's a graph that indicates a, an increase in rates up to about the highest point in the past 12 months. But savings in this case for this issue is still considered quite good. It's 5.58% of your principal being refunded, and you have a policy currently that says that you won't consider this unless it's at least 2%. So, you're well above that number. The other part of this was the refinancing of the Build America Bond issue. This was the issue that you did in 2010 that has the federal government rebating you 35% of the interest cost. Unfortunately, with sequestration, that rebate payment was reduced most recently. That triggered your ability to do this refinancing under the extraordinary call provision. And so, you're going to, as a result of the refinancing here, be able to realize a savings of $110,439 versus what you would have been paying had you received the full rebate payment. And so, this is a kind of a win-win situation for the city in that respect. Again, that is also a 5.99% of the principal being refunded, even though it's less than our original estimate of $190,000. So, that is the basic background on this first issue. I will also refer then to the second issue that's on the agenda, and that was for the notes, and that was to finance your new money projects that are budgeted for this year. We received five bids on that one, and they're indicated on pages three and four of your packet. Best bid was out of UMB Bank of Kansas City at a 1.7169% average rate. Again, on that one, the issue size was not reduced. We did have some additional benefit there. About a $15,000 amount is available for contingency for additional project costs should it be needed. That's indicated on page five. As far as the results, on pages eight and nine, we had, on eight, shown you the tax rate impact of all these issues combined along with your existing debt. And if you compare that, that's the estimate on the preliminary planning. Compare it to page, between pages eight and nine, eight was the preliminary. You can see that in the case of the bonds, we were estimating total P&amp;I costs of, principal and interest costs of 6.9 million. You're actually going to be spending 6.7 million, again, primarily because you reduced the size of the principal amount of that issue. And we do have about a $25,000 higher cost of interest on the note issue. But overall, it's still a net reduction versus what we were looking at when we started the process. So, I think your objectives were met. I also want to just mention the fact that as part of the process, the city had its rating reaffirmed by Moody's at the AA2 level. That full credit report is included on pages 12 and 13, and they recognize the strong financial position that the city is in and cite that as the basis for your good rating. So, with that, Mayor and Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer questions for council if you have any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Harrigan? Any questions for Mr. Harrigan? I'm not seeing any. We do have a motion and a second on, it'd be agenda item 9A2, or excuse me, 9B2, which is Resolution R-13-019 authorizing the issuance and sale of $5,795,000 in general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2013A. This motion requires a roll call vote, and we'll have the clerk read the roll, please. Ms. Lynch?
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
Alderperson Manley?
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
And Alderperson Years?
Aye.
The roll call vote is unanimous. We will let the record reflect that, and the motion passes. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B3, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-13-20 authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,460,000 in general obligation promissory notes, Series 2013B.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We heard the explanation from Mr. Harrigan. These promissory notes would fund items in our capital budget that have previously been approved, the largest of which is our mill and overlay program.
Are there any questions for? Are there any questions for the Finance Committee staff or Mr. Harrigan? If not, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-13-020, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,460,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2013B. And this requires a roll call vote as well. If you would, Ms. Lynch?
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
Alderperson Manley?
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
And Alderperson Years?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. We'll let the minutes reflect that. Next, Mr. Manley, please.
Under item 9B4, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-13-21, designating officials authorized to declare official intent under reimbursement bond regulations.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution comes to us in instances where the timing of projects and the issuance of debt necessitates that the city incur expenditures prior to the sale of bonds or notes. In order to reimburse itself for these initial expenditures, the city needs to indicate its intent to reimburse these costs through the proceeds of the borrowing itself. The city's Bond Council, Quarles and Brady, recommends adoption of the proposed resolution, which would clarify that Mr. Burns, the city administrator, has the authority to issue a declaration of official intent to allow for the potential reimbursement of expenditures through borrowing.
You've heard the explanation. Are there any questions for Mr. Manley or for city staff? Seeing none, this does not require a roll call vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley, anything else from Finance?
There is nothing further.
Thank you. We will also call on Mr. Manley to do the public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C1, I'll make a motion to approve an application for a special event permit for Verona Fest to occur August 2nd through the 3rd, 2013, from ICE Inc.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item and the following item come to us from Mike O'Brien of ICE Inc. And this event, I think a lot of us are familiar with it, is now the Fourth Annual Verona Fest. And it's a great event, a great program, and a great cause as it raises money for our youth hockey program in the city and a lot of the necessary upgrades and improvements that have been need to be made at the Eagles Nest. So Mr. Years and I had an opportunity to hear from the applicant on this item and the next item, and we gave our unanimous recommendation to the council.
Are there any questions for the committee or for city staff? Seeing none, the motion is to approve an application for a special event permit for Verona Fest, August 2nd through 3rd, 2013, from ICE Inc. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Under item 9C2, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a temporary Class B beer license for Verona Fest, August 2nd through the 3rd, 2013, from Mike O'Brien of ICE Inc.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Class B temporary beer license that will allow beer to be served both days for the Verona Fest event.
Are there any questions of staff or the committee? Seeing none, you've heard the motion is to approve an application for a temporary Class B beer license for Verona Fest, August 2nd through 3rd, 2013, for Mike O'Brien of ICE Inc. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C3, I'll make a motion to approve an application for a Class B beer liquor license for Carl Nolan, serving as agent for Wisconsin Brewing Company located at 1079 American Way.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Class B beer and liquor license would allow the applicant for Wisconsin Brewing Company to serve beer at that location until they begin brewing their own beer. I think a lot of us know that this brewery is under construction right now, and they're actually interested in allowing people to kind of tour the construction process as it's going on on the inside and serve them beer while doing so. It will also allow them to serve beer in their designated banquet area prior to when they get their own brewing equipment in and operating. Ms. Lynch was able to clarify for us at the meeting earlier this evening that once they become operational themselves, they will have, as part of their brewing license, a liquor license from the state, and they would surrender this license if we would approve it at that time.
Again, you've heard the explanation. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve an application for a Class B beer liquor license from Carl Nolan, the agent for Wisconsin Brewing Company located at 1079 American Way. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and that passes. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. Under item 9C4, I'll make a motion to approve the 2013-2014 liquor license renewals with two contingencies, which I'll mention now and explain in greater detail. The first contingency involves the license for the Heights, and the contingency would be upon the applicant satisfying the two outstanding debts to distributors that are currently owed by the date of July 10th of 2013. The second contingency involves the applicant Avanti's and involves four items that would need to be satisfied also by July 10th in order to be eligible for the license. Those four are receiving a valid seller's permit from the state of Wisconsin, payment of 2012 personal property taxes, payment of, third is payment of outstanding sewer and water bills to the city, and fourth is payment of an outstanding invoice to a wholesaler.
Mr. Manley, was there a time on that one?
Yeah, that one, I said July 10th as well.
July 10th as well. Okay, thank you. You have heard the explanation from Mr. Manley. Are there any questions or comments?
We need a second.
I'm sorry.
And so I will second with those contingencies.
Mr. Years has second with, in agreement with the contingency. Sorry about that. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Diaz?
In the opinion of the people on public safety, is Avanti's going to pay their bills? Because like, this is the kind of thing that you see right before a restaurant goes out of business, which may or may not affect the decision tonight, but I'm just kind of curious.
Mr. Manley?
I think it's a fair question, and I don't know the answer, but I can tell you that as long as I have been on the council, we have had contingencies for this applicant. And although we have, on one occasion, had to suspend the license for this applicant for other reasons, the, I guess, they've met their contingencies in the past. I do think it's noteworthy that this is by no means the first time that we've had to have contingencies for this applicant. And I would also note for this applicant and for the Heights, we made contingency of payment of outstanding debt to distributors as a condition. And the reason we do that is because that's a requirement of state law that in order to be eligible for a liquor license, they cannot have outstanding debt for a period of time greater than 15 days. So that's the reason why we have put those conditions contingent on their license.
Any further questions? Seeing none, you have heard the motion. All in favor of the motion with the two contingencies, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C5, I'll make a motion to approve the 2013-2014 cigarette license renewals.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ultimately a renewal of each of the existing cigarette/tobacco license applicants we have in the city with the exception of the Verona Mart on West Verona Avenue who did not submit a renewal to the city. There were no contingencies and no concerns identified by staff, so we gave our unanimous recommendation to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the 2013-2014 cigarette license renewals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
There is nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Under old business, we have none this evening. Under new business, we have discussion and possible action regarding approving an appointment to fill a vacancy on the city council. I will give a little background on this, so not just for our benefit, but for the benefit of those watching at home. We had a vacancy on the city council, a resignation in April, and we put notices on our website. Mr. Feroli had notices in the Verona Press. There was word of mouth as well. We tried to get the word out if anyone who was interested in serving on the city council to make sure that they submitted something to me by May 17th. There were a number of people, in fact, there were seven people that had expressed an interest to serve on the city council. However, five of them, five of the seven followed through and submitted something in writing by May 17th. We then, that was Mr. Feroli again, published in the Verona Press who the five individuals were. After it was published, one of the individuals emailed me and said, "I think you have four other good candidates. I wish to withdraw my name." So we ended up with four individuals that we did interview for the city council vacancy. Interviews were conducted last week Monday. We had one, Mr. Lidle is in the audience this evening. We interviewed Mr. Lidle, and those in attendance were myself, Ms. Ricky, and Mr. McGilroy, Ms. Doyle. Mr. Burns was there, Mr. Years was there, and Mr. Feroli for that interview. We conducted, and in the, first of all, in the process, it was a process that the council had agreed to, that the mayor, the president of the council, and Ms. Ricky, because she was in the same district as the vacancy, that we would be the three people on the committee that would interview the candidates. Anyone from the city council who was interested to sit in on those interviews was more than welcome to do so. Mr. Years and Ms. Doyle did participate in the first interview. Then on last week Wednesday evening, we conducted three additional interviews. We had Mr. Bear, who was in the audience this evening, Mr. Sager, Larry Sager, and Dick Vock, Dick Vock. So we interviewed the four candidates, and I would say that we were very fortunate that we had four good candidates for the city of Verona. There was only one spot available, and a couple of times the comments were made, "We wish we could select four people because we're four good people." And hopefully I don't offend or insult anyone in the comments that I'm going to make here this evening. When, after the four interviews were completed, we deliberated, and again, at that second meeting, it was Ms. Ricky, Mr. McGilroy, myself, Ms. Doyle, and Jim Feroli from the Verona Press was in the room as well. After having, I would say, a significant amount of deliberation, the recommendation was that we would recommend this evening the appointment of Patrick Lidle to the city council. A significant, again, amount of discussion based on all the candidates, based on their qualifications, their interest, how they did in the interview, past commitments to the city, and so forth. They were all considered. Mr. Lidle, again, was the four of us that were deliberating that evening. I would say that there was a consensus that Mr. Lidle would be recommended to the vacancy on the city council. There was also discussion that with Mr. Lidle currently serving on the plan commission, that if he were elected to the city council, we could then ask him if he would be willing to step down from the plan commission, and that would create another vacancy. And I had offered that evening, not as a deal, but as a way to get another person involved, that if Mr. Lidle were appointed to the plan commission, or excuse me, to the common council, that I would offer, as the mayor, because it's a mayoral appointment, to the plan commission of Mr. Bear. We thought it was an opportunity to get two of the four individuals involved. At the end of the deliberation before we left, it was suggested, or it was requested, I should say, and if I'm wrong in anything that I'm saying, please, someone who was there, correct me, is that I would contact Mr. Bear to see whether or not he was willing to serve on the plan commission before I called Mr. Lidle to see, or to offer him, or tell him that we would be recommending him. There was, after I called Mr. Bear, I actually placed that call before I left the parking lot here. After that call, I placed calls and had conversations with Ms. Ricky, with Ms. Doyle, and Mr. McGilroy, because they all asked me to have the conversations with them. Mr. Bear and I had a very good conversation, as we have had in the past. And Mr. Bear indicated to me that he would get back to me within the next day by the end of the business day on Thursday. In about an hour or so, Mr. Bear called me back and indicated that, you know, he, even though in a prior email that I had received in February, that he indicated he was interested in serving on city committees and the number one committee, Plan Commission, that he would not accept the position on the Plan Commission at this time because he had the votes on the council to be appointed as a council representative. And again, Mike is in the audience this evening. We've had conversations going back to February. I think all four of the gentlemen, our fine gentlemen, all four of the applicants, and Mr. Bear as well. Mr. Bear comes from my hometown, and we've got that connection as well. We have mutual friends, and that's how we met in the first place. Again, I'm not trying to offend anyone, but we had agreed as a city to a process of how are we going to do this? There was a recommendation that came out on Wednesday evening that pretty much four of us were in agreement with the caveat that I speak to Mr. Bear, which I did. I don't think that this is the hometown Verona that we all talk about. I really don't. I think we need to call it what it really is, from what I understand is going to happen this evening. And again, this is nothing against Mr. Bear. If Mr. Bear gets the votes, I know that I can work with Mr. Bear. I know that everyone on the council will, as well as the city staff. Mike Bear is a decent gentleman. I do question, though, when we take a look at the other applicants that we interviewed, as having additional qualifications that Mike currently doesn't have at this point. Mr. Lidle has been a resident of the city of Verona since 1999. He has served on the Plan Commission for over six years and has done an exceptional job, I believe, on the Plan Commission and could serve the city well as an alder, with both feet on the ground running. There's no question about that. I'll go back to Mike. I think Mike could do a great job for the city as well. I think that there would be a learning curve. And Mike, I told Mike, when I had a conversation with him, Mr. Bear, I should say, that I felt that his, really, his only weakness was that he was relatively new to the city. I believe that he bought a house, Mike, here in January, I believe, in 2013. But I encouraged Mike, and when I first met him, that we do want to get people that are interested in serving involved. I believe that that is Mike's, Mike's shortcoming, is that he hasn't been here long. Again, as I stated, Mr. Lidle has been here since 1999 with his family, owns a business in the community, and has a commitment, or he has served the committee well. The next candidate, Mr. Sager, who most of us know as the former administrator in the city of Verona for 11 years. city of Verona for 11 years. Mr. Sager has lived here since 1996 in this community, has served the community well, and continues to serve the committee in a lot of voluntary roles. Mr. Sager, before he was here, he was city administrator in Mozzany, and prior to that, he worked for the Plan Commission in North Central Wisconsin. I've known Larry since I became involved with the city since 1997. He's a true professional, certainly extremely qualified, interested to serve, and repeatedly said that he felt that he could help out in the short term, as well as the long term, if, you know, if he decided that he would. The next morning, he did send us a follow-up email, because he had indicated initially that he would fill the term, but then not run for election. The next morning, he did send an email, thanked us for the interview, and indicated that he would like to leave his options open, as far as running for election next year. The other gentleman, Dick Vock, has been a resident of the city since 1988. He has been involved in design and building of, I believe it's more on the medical side of facilities, but a lot of experience, and again, a 25-year resident of the city of I don't know what the vote's going to be tonight. I've been told by one individual what the outcome of the vote will be. It's certainly frustrating to me that I had three members of this council tell me that they were supporting one candidate before we even knew who was applying for the vacancy in the city of Verona, before we ever conducted interviews for the position. That is extremely disturbing to me. And again, I don't think that that's something that we want to see in hometown Verona. So I would ask anyone else that was in attendance at the meetings, Heather, Elizabeth, Dale, you were at the Monday meeting, if I said anything here that's incorrect, I wish that someone would say this to me, that it was incorrect and set the record straight. That was the agreement, that was the consensus that we had when we walked out of the room last week Wednesday. Mr. McGilvery, Alder Person McGilvery, is unable to attend this evening. He is in Colorado, his grandmother turned 100 years old, and he decided that he needed to be there. Mr. McGilvery indicated to me that had he been here tonight, that he would be, he would have nominated Mr. Lidle, and that he also would have voted and supported Mr. Lidle. So that, if I forgot anything, I will try and add if there's additional opportunities for me to do that here. But I would ask if there's anything that I have said that is incorrect. I mean, I've always believed, I've been involved in local government for 35 years, and the best government is good government, honest government, open government, and deliberate government. And I could go on, there's more. And I feel strongly about that. One of the reasons that I love local government as much as I do is because local government is nonpartisan, and it should remain nonpartisan. What we're seeing here is politics being played and not governing, and I think that is a bad direction for the city of Verona. And I don't think that the people that have lived here for a long time, or for a short time, want to see this city go in that direction. That's not what the city was built on. It's one of the main foundations of why all of us moved here, because Verona is as great as it is. But if we want Verona to continue to be great, we have to be open, we have to be transparent, we have to be honest, and we have to have good government. So I'll conclude my remarks with that. Anyone else wish to say anything? Mr. Years?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that there's one issue that I would contest, and that, at least on my part, that politics is being played. I would disagree with that. I said, and I, excuse me, I mean no disrespect, I respect both of these candidates greatly, and think both of them offer great things for Verona. Mr. Bear contacted me as soon as he heard of a vacancy on the council, asked to meet with me to discuss what I thought were issues for the city. Also, he gave each one of us a letter of intent, as well as a resume, and contacted each one of us as well, and he is the only candidate to have done that. And also, as you know, Mr. Mayor, I am at pretty much every single public meeting Verona has. And one face I see at pretty much every single public meeting, even before he knew there was a vacancy, was Mr. Bear. He has taken that on himself to be at each of those meetings, listening to the voices of people, which I also greatly respect. And my last comment is that I remember that Mr. Lidle had said that if there were other qualified candidates willing to serve, that he'd also be willing to stay on the Plan Commission. And I know that's been said many times on this council before, that the fewer disruptions of the city, possible, the better. And this offers both gentlemen to keep their voices on the city, in the city, without creating more disruption, in my opinion. So I would contest that politics are being played, and would argue against that, at least from my point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Years, for those comments. I was in the meeting, in the interview last week Monday, and from what I heard Mr. Lidle say is that if he was not selected to serve on the City Council, that he would desire to serve, continue to serve on the Plan Commission. I didn't hear that it was if there were other qualified candidates that he was willing to, you know, remain on. What I heard from Mr. Lidle was that if, you know, I think he was very open with it, that if he didn't get appointed to the City Council, that his desire was to continue to serve, and he had just been reappointed to a three-year term on the Plan Commission. Other, Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. And I do agree with your assessment, that we were extremely lucky in having so many qualified candidates step forward to fill this vacancy. I believe any one of them can bring very valuable insights and opinions to the council. And I did indicate during the interview process that I feel if, the only difference that we saw between kind of the two candidates we whittled it down to was a difference in residency, I personally found that to be very hypocritical for me to choose someone over being a newer resident, being a newer resident myself. So I personally feel that Mr. Bear brings kind of a broader statewide vision that we can bring and use to enhance our council position, because we do have a lot of voices from hometown, and have had a lot of people really step forward to be a process, a part of the process here in the city. So I feel that that would be an asset to us on the council.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. We've had conversations since last week Wednesday, and I said this, and Mike, please forgive me for this. Mike is a fine gentleman. He's going to be great in whatever he does in the future, I'm not concerned about that at all. But how can you argue, especially two of the other candidates? We know them well. How can you make the argument and rationalize that Mr. Bear has higher qualifications than either Mr. Lidle, who has already, has served the city for six years, and shown his commitment? And a lot of people don't realize this, that unless we're elected officials, nobody gets paid in the city. You don't get paid to be on the Plan Commission, you don't get paid to be on any of the other committees that we have, the citizen members. I didn't initially appoint Mr. Lidle to the Plan Commission. Mayor Volker did, before I was mayor. So some people would say that Mr. Lidle is my guy. Mr. Lidle is not my guy. I had the great honor and privilege to get to know him and see him in action on the Plan Commission. To me, it means a great deal, and I think to the majority of the people in the city of Verona, that you've got an individual who is committed and has lived for a significant amount of time in this city, who owns a business in this city with his family. That's one candidate. And before I forget, let me just say that this city, when we hired Mr. Burns, it was one of the things that the City Council said, is that when we hire a city administrator, we want that person to live in the city and be committed to the city. Mr. Burns fortunately was already a resident of the city. But the city determined that that was extremely important, that you had someone that was committed. How can you argue against, again, Mr. Lidle? And I'll say the same thing for Larry Sager. I've known Larry for a long time, has a tremendous amount of respect. Mr. Sager and former Mayor Volker certainly deserve a lot of credit for how our city looks today. They are very, very committed to the city. Mr. Sager, again, has been in this city since 1996. He has worked his entire career helping local units of government, and his background was as a planner. I like Mike Bear. I think Mike Bear would do a fine job. Again, I'm not concerned about that. But I don't think that he meets the qualifications at this point in his career as some of the other candidates that we interviewed. And again, I state that when we walked out of that meeting last week Wednesday, the agreement was, the consensus was, that we would be recommending Mr. Lidle tonight. So I can't, I can't vote. But I feel that I have an obligation to the city to be honest and open with them, and I want to tell them what occurred, and that's what I've done, to the best of my ability, to be honest and open about what occurred. And there, at this point, there is no question, in my opinion whatsoever, that Mr. Lidle is the right person for this time, for the city of Verona right now. I say that without any hesitation whatsoever. Any, Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, you know, I didn't have the benefit of attending either of the interview sessions, which I regret. I mean, there's a lot of meetings that I wish I could attend, but with work and having, you know, a wife and three children, it's, you get spread pretty thin. Although it's troubling the implication that equating Mr. Bear and his potential approval this evening as being political, and I wonder if, you know, what the basis is for that, if there's, if he was involved in the campaigns of any of the members of the council, or what the basis is for making that type of a statement.
Well, I'll just respond, and anyone else that was there as well. During the deliberations, and again, I want to be open and honest with anything that was said in those, when we were discussing our rationale of who we would recommend, and please correct me again if I'm wrong, but Ms. Riki made the statement that she was more comfortable with Mr. Bear because he had helped out on her campaign. So I, the only thing is, from what I heard that evening, is that he was involved in Heather's campaign, I don't know if he was involved in any other campaigns. But people do get involved in campaigns, I'm not saying that people shouldn't do that. But that was a statement that was made, was that, again, that Ms. Riki felt more comfortable with Mr. Bear because he had helped out on the campaign. That's all I can respond to. Mr. Manley? Mr. Manley?
It looked like Ms. Riki wanted to...
Ms. Riki?
That is true, that he offered to help in my campaign. Not much of that happened, but just with timing and things like that. But I was going to point out something in addition to what other people, I was going to say many of the things that you already said about Mr. Bear, but that he reached out to me because I was a candidate in his district before the May 17 deadline to put his name in the hat for Alder Person. And I just want to point out that I too think that all four candidates put us in sort of an awkward good position to be in, because they're all such high quality, and I really wish that there were four spots, like you said. And that's why I wanted to kind of, I felt like it was crossing the line to come around to your point of view, because I have nothing against Mr. Lidle, and I would like him to be on City Council almost as much as Mike Bear. And so that's when we sort of thought about this compromise idea, but when Mike Bear said that, no, he really wasn't interested in that, then I, then it goes back to who's the best person for the task at hand, which is City Council. And I feel a little awkward being in this position of power of making this decision. I'm not comfortable with being in this position in the first place, because when I got elected, I had no idea that this would happen. And so this spot has been vacated, we chose, instead of running another election and having the citizens elect somebody, that we would do this other alternative of interviews and sort of a common council appointment. But my understanding is that it will still be a vote of the quorum that we have here tonight, and that it's not just the three of us that were in the interviews making the final decision. So I guess I'm more comfortable opening it up to that and having two people nominated here at this, at this common council voting level, so.
Thank you, Ms. Riki, and I hope no one took it wrong by that we were the three that were going to make the decision, because clearly, according to our ordinances, it is the, it is the common council that makes that appointment to fill the vacancy. So absolutely, it is the, it is the common council that does that. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess that being said, I'd like to nominate Patrick Lidle for the position. And I want to talk a little bit about why I'd like to nominate Mr. Lidle. As I said, I didn't, I didn't have the opportunity, unfortunately, to attend the interviews, but there was a period of time when I served on the Plan Commission, that Patrick sat next to me, and I served on that body with him. And although we didn't always agree on the issues, in fact, there were a number of instances where we disagreed, I always knew him to be a very thoughtful person, somebody who's passionate about our city, somebody who cares deeply about our city, somebody who's invested in our city, not just as a family that he's raising here, but as a business owner. I think he has every single attribute that we would want if we were writing a job description for the common council to fill this open seat. Mr. Lidle exemplifies every one of those characters and qualities, regardless of his ideology. And I guess it's, it would be an unfortunate mistake, in my opinion, if we turned a blind eye toward all of those important characteristics and instead said, "We're going to nominate somebody who's maybe a very well-intentioned person, but who's only been in our city for five months, but maybe knows some people and maybe offered to help some people's campaigns." I guess, I think it sends a really terrible message to our city volunteers and the time and commitment that they make to the city if we essentially say that we don't value that enough to rank that higher than, you know, friendships or, you know, political connections, or whatever the case may be. So with that, I enthusiastically recommend Patrick Lidle, who I know to be a good man, and somebody who would do our city proud, as a member of the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. That means that nominations are open, since we just had a nomination, and Mr. Manley has nominated Patrick Lidle. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. And in all due respect, Mr. Mayor, from the last round of interviews, I would like to add that I did voice dissent to any, I don't know, compromise or deal, or however you would like to word it, because again, I saw, you know, and just felt personally, I couldn't choose one person over the other, if the main distinction we were making...
over the other if the main distinction we were making was how long they had been a resident of this community. Because I don't feel that because, and maybe this is just through my personal lens, but that because I'm a newer resident, that I am any less committed than anyone else here on the council. So on that note, I would like to go ahead and nominate Mr. Bear for the council appointment. And I would also like to say that at the end of the day, we need to pick the person who's the best for the council and the best for the city of Verona. I don't place friendships or, you know, I've, again, met with Mr. Bear, but in that capacity, I, you know, there's no allegiances or campaigns or political intent. At the end of the day, it's what's best for the city of Verona. And I, I would shudder to think that someone would disagree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Mr. Diaz?
I'd like to speak on behalf of Mike Bear. He did send me his resume and some other information, and he also went so far as to ask my opinion on city politics, which I found kind of refreshing from people. There's a lot of stuff coming up in my district with the downtown planning, a lot of things that are really important to residents and really important to me for how the future of the city will look. And the fact that Mike came forward to ask my opinions, I mean, we might not agree on everything, but it shows he'll actually listen to me. And this is going to be one of the biggest things as far as my job, to make sure that the residents of District Three are properly represented. And it's just something I don't feel right taking a risk on going with somebody who says the experience thing because that's the kind of argument that was used against me, and I've been hearing it since December. And I'm getting a little tired of it because I know a lot about city politics, I know a lot about city planning. And regardless of whether you want me on city council or not, I'm the duly elected representative for District Three residents, and my job is to do the best I can for them. And I feel like Mike is somebody I can work with and help, help do a good job with that. And then just as an aside, I would also like to point out that when you're applying for a job, there's never a point where they say, oh, you should send a thank you note to your job interview. You should never do a follow-up call. But the candidates who really want the job, go forward and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Other comments or any other nominations?
Just one other comment. That one of the questions was, would the person want to run for the election that will be, you know, in April? And Mike Bear wholeheartedly said yes. And this is a political process to be elected to a city government position. It just, it just is political. So I don't think we're making it political. And I think also just, I wanted to comment on the experience issue as well because I also don't have prior experience in city government, but I too was elected. And so really only the qualifications you have to have are that you live in the proper district and have a desire to serve your community and work with the people who live there. And I think that all four candidates have shown that they want to do that or are doing that and that Mike Bear is in amongst them. And I think we, he should have every right to have a chance to, you know, be in this position and let the citizens decide at election time, which is not too far off.
Thank you, Ms. Riki. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just fundamentally disagree that experience doesn't matter. And I'll just, in my experience with hiring people, you have applicants and you try and make a prediction about how an applicant is going to fit into your organization and how an applicant's work product is going to mesh with the job responsibilities. And I'm sure that Mr. Bear is a fine individual, a fine fellow, but his experience is, at least as it relates to Verona city government, theoretical experience. Whereas Mr. Lidle's experience is demonstrated experience. And in a job interview, when you can choose between demonstrated experience and hypothetical or theoretical experience for the job, you go with demonstrated experience every time. And that's why I feel very strongly that Mr. Lidle ought to be our pick for the open seat.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Further comments? Further comments? Mr. yours?
I sincerely want both of these gentlemen to have a voice in the city. And I guess that's one reason why I am supporting Mr. Bear today. And I look forward to working with Mr. Lidle on the Plan Commission. I know I'm going to be able to learn from him on the Plan Commission. And as Ms. Riki stated, this appointment only goes till April of next year. And then the people of Verona will get to decide. And I stated my reasons for supporting Mike Bear before too, and not one of them mentioned him because he is a friend of mine, not one of them mentioned because he worked on my campaign. And I guess I find it aggravating that others on the council are predicting why I'm making my decisions, and that's something I do not appreciate. And I hope that as this council moves forward, this type of behavior will end so that, you know, we can actually have discussions about Verona's issues and not about anything, not about the personalities of it.
Thank you, Mr. yours. I think, just a final comment, and I appreciate those comments as well, Dale. Just a final comment. One of the things, and again, I've been doing this for 35 years, over that, over 35 years. One of the things that I think we don't give the public credit for, a lot of times we think that the public is not interested, that they don't understand, they don't care. This action that'll be taken tonight is just one of many actions that we'll be taking over the next several months and for a long time, one of many. But one thing that I have found is that our actions definitely speak louder than our words. And people are watching what we do and they should watch what we do. We are the government, we are the representatives of the people in the city that we serve. And if we don't serve them well, then we shouldn't be sitting around this dais. We shouldn't. This is one of many actions that will be coming up. So seeing no other comments, I will ask for the vote. And we have Mr. Manley nominated Mr. Lidle, Ms. Doyle nominated Mr. Bear. Since Mr. Lidle was nominated first, I will ask for a show of hands. Those that wish to have Mr. Lidle appointed to the common council, please raise their hands. I will let the record reflect that Mr. Manley raised his hand. For those that are supporting Mr. Bear for the common council, please raise their hand. And we will let the records reflect that the remaining five members of the council supported Mr. Bear. So with that, Mr. Bear, we congratulate you. You are on the common council. Hopefully you didn't take offense with any of the comments that were made this evening. We will have you sworn into office at the next meeting of the common council. We look forward to working with you. Mr. Lidle, you're still in the audience, so we hope that you weren't offended in any way as well. We look forward to having you continue to serve on the Plan Commission and continue the great job that you've been doing. So thank, thank you to both of you and to the other two candidates as well. We had good, healthy discussion here this evening. That's positive and we'll continue healthy discussion as we move down the road. So with that, Ms. Lynch, do we have any operator licenses this evening?
We have quite a few this evening. I passed around to each of you a list. The first page is for brand new operator licenses. They haven't applied in the city of Verona before. And then the next two pages includes all of the renewals as the license period for operator licenses is July 1st through June 30th. So those are all listed by establishment.
You've heard the explanation by Ms. Lynch. What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Do we have any announcements this evening? Mr. Steiner?
Thanks, Mayor. The witches have left the area and Peter Pan is making an arrival. He will be presented by the VACT, Verona Area Community Theater, six performances between the 21st and the 29th. Tickets are available at eight four five VACT or online VACT.org. We have the wonderful and very successful summer reading program starting next week on the 17th at our public library. It is an exciting time for our young readers and our librarians and their director have put together another wonderful program for these people. And my third item is, we have another activity downtown this week, if you would like to be entertained. We have our very honorable police chief speaking this Friday at 9:00 a.m. at the Senior Center about issues related to what's going on within the city from his point of view. And he's a very good speaker. We heard him about four or five months ago and we welcomed him back to fill us in on what he's been doing. And he, of course, agreed wholeheartedly. I think it's because we have donuts, fruit, and juice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. And Mr. yours?
I would just like to announce and also thank Ron Reader and the Public Works Department. The Veterans Memorial across the street from Tubal has been fixed up. It had been crumbling from the base up, and our hope was to have that done by Memorial Day. However, this rainy late spring we are having prevented that from happening, but it is now fixed up. It looks just as new. And I hope people go downtown and look at the newly completed structure. So just wanted to let the citizens know that.
Thank you, Ms. yours. Ms. Doyle?
I'd like to announce that I'm finally getting around to holding my first listening session at the Senior Center. So that will be Saturday, June 22nd at 10:00 a.m. And if I haven't met you already, please stop by. All are welcome in the city regardless of if you're in my district. And I look forward to hearing your comments and meeting you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any additional comments, announcements? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order. So moved. We have a motion by Mr. Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. yours. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.